...for Monday, November 5th, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, please call the board.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Wynn.
Here.
President.
Mr. McAlister.
Here.
Mr. Wynn.
Here.
And Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much.
We have a forum. Can you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you.
We usually open our meetings with a period of public comment. If there is anybody among our guests who would like to share something with the school committee, the guidelines are that we need to give your name so that we can attach a name to the idea. We will take notes on that. If you could speak for about two minutes and if you could avoid talking about any specific individual student to maintain their privacy, we would appreciate that as well. Is there anybody who has anything they'd like to share in this? Please come up and use your name.
I'm Christine Ricardi. I'm one of six physicians over at Children's Healthcare Pediatric Practice here in Newburyport. We service this community. We have so for the last over forty-six years, and I personally have served this community for over twelve. I do have three children in the public school system. I'm here to let you know that our practice strongly opposes the opening of retail marijuana shops. Our opinion is heavily supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics. There's much on Google and much you can read, and you can look to the American Academy of Pediatrics for all the reasons why. And it's especially important to look at our adolescents. There's been enough research at this point that shows that marijuana is very harmful to the adolescent, developing adolescent brain. It's very harmful. As a physician and as educators, I think we all share something in common. This is a hard time to take care of children, to raise children, excuse me, with all the social peer pressures and social media and what have you. We're not in, children are not able to adequately develop coping mechanisms, and this leads to drug use. I will say the one thing that the American Academy of Pediatrics has stated is that even with the strongest restrictions and regulations, it still sends a harmful message to children when there are retail shops in the community. I'm asking for the school system, kindly asking for the school system, to back us up in this support to oppose these retail shops. There is a circulating petition asking that there be a vote on the ballot, looking for our citizens' opinion and being able to opt out of this. And I would hope that everyone looks at this and supports it, not for the money in our wallets and not for anything else other than our children. I think that a community that puts its children first, first and foremost, on making education important and everything that's to do with raising children, is a community that will be very successful in the future. I think I probably talked too much, but thank you for your time and thank you for all the help and support you give our children. We really are grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody additionally have something they'd like to share? Hearing none, we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have warrants, Mr. Cole?
Yes, we have three warrants. First warrant, I named that the, I moved that the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and ninety-eight cents be approved for the city auditor to make payments and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass as unanimous.
The next warrant, I moved that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate fifty-three thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-nine cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass as unanimous.
And last, I moved that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate three hundred ten thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass as. We have a set of minutes from the October fifteenth business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion, changes, feedback? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Present. One present from the mayor. Terrific. I will turn the rest of the meeting, or at least this next few sections of the meeting over to Superintendent Sean Gallagher.
All right. I think before we get to our staff and faculty recognitions, we have a STEM update by science teacher Erin Hogs at the high school. Come on up. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. How you doing?
Good.
Good. I am here to tell you about some of the updates within the Science Department. At the end of last school year, we received some NEF funding as part of our STEM proposal, which we were working on and sharing out over the past couple of years. The Science Department has received those funds, and we have purchased a majority of the equipment we originally had listed out. And this included a variety of PASCO probe ware, some biotech equipment as well, including gel electrophoresis, types of lab equipment, some extensive physics equipment, which I can't even name all of the things that they requested, but it's quite exciting stuff. And we are focusing our goals, our professional and student goals, around the use of this equipment into our current curriculum. We are hoping to improve our students' ability to really collect sophisticated data with high-tech technology and improve their analytical skills with all this new equipment. So we have set some goals, and some of that is learning some of the equipment we have, and then implementing it within our curriculum. We have seen Paul Goldner and Ken Cole, they're currently using their new wireless smart carts. They have been able to increase the number of labs they're offering. They're going deeper into the content and pushing those analytical skills, which we're really excited to see. We also have Colleen Fallon. We've been partnering with Amgen Biotech's outreach program down at Harvard, and she went down last week to, for a professional development. And this week, she's running a polymerase chain reaction. She's basically taking the kids' cheek cells there, then taking that DNA and amplifying it. I wrote down the number. It's four billion, two hundred and ninety-four million, nine hundred and sixty-seven and change copies of their own DNA. And then they're running that through gels, and this is really high-tech labs that our students are doing, and we're extremely excited about it. We also just received some new LED grow lights for our hydroponics towers that we have at the high school. Those were on within twenty-four hours after we got them. My room, 332, is lit up like a Christmas tree. The custodians are coming up thinking the lights are left on. It's so bright, but they look really great, and the kids are really enjoying that as well. Sarah Ledbeater and Ken Cole, they just participated in a professional development last week with Concord Consortium. And this program is NSF-funded, and they are looking at infrared technology and artificial intelligence. And these two teachers currently run our engineering in the Twenty-First Century class. And now they're looking at including infrared technology into that program as well. So really, high-tech cameras that can detect heat in different environments, and it has some chemical, chemistry applications, as well as biological applications, and we're trying to see how that can work in other content areas as well. They're really excited about that possibility for their engineering course. We are looking ahead to what this means for us in our courses, and we're looking to start by getting it all worked into the curriculum and then working on vertically aligning this technology and the analysis piece through the three main courses at the high school. So we're really excited about what we're doing. We're very grateful for what the NEF has given us and what we are able to offer our students at the high school. That's pretty much what I got for an update. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Actually, I have one. Was there any equipment that we were currently using that we're not using anymore that's been moved to, say, middle school or anything like that from a high school?
All of the probe ware is new. We do have some biotech equipment that is very old and clunky. We could possibly look at moving that down to the middle school, but it is quite expensive to run. The newer equipment we have for biotech is actually more efficient and requires less consumables, so.
That's great. Thank you.
I just, just, Ms. Hogs, I had the opportunity of sitting down with Mr. Wolf, Ms. Beck, and her enthusiasm about science and all these new tools. I, you know, I left the meeting really excited about the opportunities for our students. And there's a lot of teachers at the high school and throughout the district that are really making the connections from the classroom to the real world, and this is, what you're doing in the science department, I'm just really proud, and we're really happy with all your efforts. So, thank you for leaving on.
Thank you. I will turn, again, the staff, faculty, student recognitions over to Superintendent Gallagher. We will take a very short break after this for a photo opportunity and then resume our meeting. So, go ahead, Sean.
All right. Well, this is the exciting part of our school committee session. At this time, I'm going to recognize two staff members, Trish Blackstock and Sarah O'Connor, for all of their work in the ambassador program, which is our orientation program. So they, these staff members really looking to make the ease from eighth grade to ninth grade for our students. They put a lot of effort in, working with our student ambassadors, our student leaders, to have that transition over the summer. We had forty ambassadors participate and work with the freshmen as they're transitioning in, and we have some students here that will also be part of the recognition. So at this time, I like to have Trish and Sarah come on up. I'm not sure if you want to talk about the program first a little bit, a little more detail.
Okay. So, probably about, I think they're seniors in college now, so like four years ago, I had some students who needed an internship in my office. So I said, "Great, come work with me." And I sort of started this little, small group of ambassadors that has grown to at least forty students at the high school. And every year, our new student orientation, whether it's freshman or transfer students, these kids really step up. They take the entire day to work with us and time beforehand. So after, you know, Sarah helped me out last year, I said, "I think we need to beef it up a little bit. What do you think about doing some, you know, sort of professional development time over the summer and working on a little bit of a curriculum?" So she went ahead and did that, and we actually had all of the students run the orientation without us in the classrooms because all of the feedback we received from the new students was we really liked talking to the current students and we felt comfortable asking them questions. So with our forty students, Tess being one, Logan, Hunter, and Daria came to sort of represent the students right now, and so we're pretty proud of it, and we'll keep making it better year after year. And Tess did a lot of the technical stuff because she was everywhere. She was everywhere. So, that's it.
All right. And you have the students that are here, so what we'll do is, we have a little certificate for all your efforts, and why don't we bring the students up that are here tonight? That'd be great. Come on up.
Can we get them introduced?
Yeah. I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you, tell them what you're, just what else you do. Yeah. I'm Logan Lottamy. I'm a senior.
I'm Hunter Bushnell. I'm a senior.
I'm Daria Mayer. I'm a senior.
I'm Tess Egan. I'm also a senior.
All right. The programs aren't just limited to seniors.
No. The group is, I think, great.
Yeah. Yeah, sophomores through senior.
Everyone except for fresh, right?
We'll take a very short break here.
Recognizing our students and our staff for great work that they're doing, and I went to the high school and I made this presentation. We'd really like to recognize our students, you know, that go above and beyond Call of Duty and really make an impact on our school system. And so when I brought this to the high school, there was one name, Tess, was mentioned. Everyone I asked, they said, "You gotta recognize Tess." And I said, "What's so special about Tess?" And then I have like a three-page write-up on Tess, and she's very special. So she has done a lot of things for the high school. She's really, I think, assisted with Mr. Wolf in his transition from the spring all the way on and helping out with organizing. National Honor Society member. She's in our theater. She's a stage manager. She does all the summer workshops. She's a student ambassador. She leads tours for parents and students throughout. She provides ongoing tech support, which I might need in about another twenty minutes, so I'm glad you're here. She's a captain of the volleyball team and is enrolled in all kinds of rigorous schedule like AP Bio, AP Calc. She pushes herself academically, but most of all, I think that everybody I talk to is, "You're a good person, and you're willing to help out those at any time, especially those that are less fortunate. So we're very, very lucky to have you and recognize you tonight." So, thank you.
Congratulations. Come on.
Yep, yep.
All right. All right. How you doing?
Got you guys involved.
Got it. All right. So, put you to work, Tess.
So good.
You're a co-student rep, and if you have anything you'd like to share with us, this is your opportunity to do that.
Of course. We've got lots of recent school happenings, such as the IDC class have been partnered with the Port City Sandwich here in Newburyport on a lunch delivery service to build skills for these students. It's a really great opportunity for these kids to practice with their practical math skills and money management. Our own theater department at the high school is hard at work preparing for their fall musical called Spamalot, which opens this Friday night and then shows again on Saturday, as well as the following weekend on the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. And there's also a fully student-run middle school production of Anne of Green Gables, which is November fourteenth at 6:30 and the fifteenth at 5:00 p.m. There's a sophomore at Newburyport High School named Aiden O'Connor who was recently recognized at our October pep rally for his work with his own personal documentary called Life is a Movie, which was selected for the Boston International Kid Film Festival, and it will be shown at the Somerville Theater, and there was a news article on the front page of our Daily News today about that. Also, the boys' cross-country team at Newburyport High School had an undefeated season, which won them the Cal championship title. And for some fun activities, we had our annual senior dress-up day on Halloween last Wednesday, and we have some preparations for our color day that have become very exciting for this Thanksgiving. And then finally, this Thursday will be the Seventh Annual Great Marsh Symposium hosted by the students of the Gulf of Maine Institute, and they're going to facilitate a dialogue with some experts from a variety of backgrounds about the Great Marsh here in Newburyport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. I think this is an opportunity now for Matt Chappell to come up and talk to us about a field trip.
Hello. Thank you for having us. My name is Matt LaChappelle. I teach citizens and government and economics at the high school. I'm also the co-adviser of the Model UN with Wendy Crofts. And this year, we have the, kind of a twist on our traditional Model UN. I've been coming to you guys for a while, letting you know of trips to Montreal, to New York, to Maine. This year, and, well, this year, we're trying something different. For the last fifteen, sixteen years, we've been trying to get academic credit for kids that do Model UN. Model UN is a tremendous academic, rigorous exercise that the kids have been doing for, since 2002 with Wendy and I, for absolutely zero academic credit. But the amount of work that goes into it is as rigorous and as intense as most classes. So last year, through your support, we were able to start up a new class, which we now call World Affairs and Diplomacy. We have nineteen students enrolled in the class, and this year, we are currently running the Model UN as a course that meets every day, I'm sorry, every Thursday, after school for an hour, as well as two hours on a, on simulation periods. And then at the end of November, we plan on going to Rutgers University for a four-day, three-night, kind of full-blown immersion simulation of United Nations Conference. And we're looking for your support to go on this field trip. It is an overnight field trip. It is at the Grand Hyatt in New Brunswick, New Jersey. Students will be in committee sessions for anywhere from three sessions, three hours apiece, three times a day, to sessions where they'll meet informally during lunch, dinner, discussing some of the world's most pressing global issues. Each student will represent a foreign country. Particularly this year, most of our students are representing the Republic of Iran, which is a very challenging position. It's one that we kind of embrace because we have a strong team and some very academically engaged students. And they'll be looking at things, challenges in the World Health Organization, challenges in the Security Council, challenges in, trying to think of other topics, lots of rigorous challenges, some STEM-related, some geography-related, some, there's many, that I won't go into in depth right now because I can't think of them off the top of my head. But it is a great trip. I would love to have your support. And I also have some of our students here today to answer any questions about their experiences. Some of our veterans have come, and if you guys want to come up, then they will answer your questions. Zach Elias, Mac Foltz, and Kim Johnson.
Hello. Anybody in the school committee have questions about what the process is and what happens at the Model UN? So I do, actually. So you sort, you represent a country and you have to obviously do all the research, and then it's almost as if you're participating in a United Nations session where there's legislation and all kinds of stuff that's going on. Is that how it works? Or if you can describe it, that would be great.
Yeah, so we spend a few months prior to the conference researching our nation's political views, our imports, exports, ties to other countries, and we really get a whole picture of what each of these countries is. And then we go to this conference, and we discuss current topics, be that waste issues. I played China in waste issues in the General Assembly last year, and it's, you have to consider every part of that, so how a possible resolution could impact your country, and you really need to act in the shoes of the delegation of your country.
Yeah, speaking to the academic rigor of the course, you have to write position papers, you have to outline position papers. There's a lot of research that goes into, you need to cite sources, all that kind of stuff, because when you go into the conference, you don't want to kind of look like a jerk when you show up, like you don't really know anything. Like, I've seen a lot of people do that, and it's just like, it's like, why are you really there? You're kind of just there to, like, get out of school. So like, I think making, especially making it a real class now with, like, honors credit definitely kind of speaks to, like, the amount of work that goes into it, because it really is, like, it's a class, and like, you need to be prepared for a conference.
Do these efforts find solutions to some of these problems?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say the best that sixteen, seventeen-year-olds can, but yeah, I mean, a lot of us are, you know, we put a lot of thought into it, and it's not, I just want to point out, it's not just a class that meets every Thursday, even though we do just meet that one day of the week. We put hours and hours into researching and really getting to know our topics and really finding the best solutions that we can.
Yeah, I think, personally, I think it's terrific. I'm not being snarky when I say this. Do you guys forward your solutions to the United Nations, to some of these countries? Because I kind of disagree with the value of work being done by sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. In a lot of, a lot of ways, you guys see things very clearly and very differently. So I'd really be interested in hearing some of your solutions to some of these problems.
Honestly, some of us should, because some of them actually haven't, have actually have not made, like, complete total nonsense, like, some of them are actually kind of feasible.
Yeah. Some, we've, like, multiple times, we've made jokes, like, "Hey, we should tell them about this," because they are really feasible options. So, for example, the waste management issue, one of our big topics was air pollution, and a delegate had come up with the idea to line chimneys with limestone, because it can aid multiple developing countries that have that as a plentiful resource, because they can turn that into a large export, and limestone naturally filters the air of lots of the pollutants that were coming out of them. And it just seemed to be a really all-around, well-developed topic that we were all saying we should have forwarded to the UN.
Never too late.
My only issue with the Model UN is that I have 100% support. It's a wonderful program, and listening to you speak about this, we don't hear what happened. You know, we approve your trips, you fund the trips, we want you to come back, and could you give us, sort of, tell us what you, you know, presented about Iran in terms of what, you know, as you said, all the complexities of this country, how you did, how you were, you know, just, we'd love to hear how, you know, you did and what you thought of the trip, and just give us some feedback, not next year, but, you know, like...
For the school year's out this year, right?
So you're coming back on December 2nd, so maybe the first school committee in January, or last one in January, giving enough time to pull your stuff together and just come and present for, you know, ten minutes, and just tell us what you've learned and, you know, how the trip went, and how you took first place, and whatever.
I just have one question for Matt, and it's the question you usually ask when people are presenting field trips to us, and that is, there, we assume that there is financial support for families that are, may not be able to make the...
Yes, there is. Yeah, we secured funding, actually, just recently from Lydia's kids, helped us out a little bit, and we appreciate their support.
Great. Terrific. Thanks. Anybody have any further questions or would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the, is it civics class, is that? No, World Affairs and Diplomacy, Model UN honors class, a trip to the United Nations, Model UN.
Seven. Any discussion? I don't envy anybody going to New Jersey, but enjoy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass as unanimously. Save the world, guys. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you very much.
How nice you did.
I guess, next on our agenda is a coordinated program review wrap-up.
Yes.
Do you want me to put it?
Yeah. You want to, me, help, please?
Are you ready?
Yeah, maybe. I just, he sets that up. You can actually, so.
Here's your check.
I'm just, just kind of like...
Put the card.
I'm just, just kind of like, oh, my goodness.
Too much for me. About a third. It was a, 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 a,
I apologize everyone, I apologize first for being late. And I apologize, Christina got ill, was the last minute this evening. So we're just kind of scrambling.
All hands on deck.
All hands on deck to make this happen.
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, it's fine.
Well, I'll be next.
Oh, we're gonna do it for the next meeting?
Okay.
We have it on this computer.
Right here, table aside.
Oh, you got it?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay. Great, um, sorry for the... I guess we now move to Angela's report.
Okay.
But I do want to mention to the school committee that even though we just removed a substantial item from the agenda, we do anticipate a short executive session after this meeting.
Okay.
Forward.
All right. I'm doing an update tonight on the district review process, and that's partially why I'm so discombobulated. I am just up to here in district review. Our self-evaluation is due next week. So we're about a week away from that. We have probably a hundred and fifty pieces of evidence collected that we feel represent the district nicely. We're in the process of honing that down a little bit and consolidating and looking for gaps in the information that we're sending in right now. So it's been, the leadership team has been great. Everybody has been working collaboratively to gather the evidence. And, and now, as a central office, we are sifting through it and I'm organizing it and getting it ready for upload. So we're almost there. And it's been an interesting and valuable process, just hours and hours and hours and hours of time. So, so that's the update on that, and we're going to celebrate on the fourteenth when it's uploaded. So it's, we're almost there. And then the other thing I was going to talk to you about tonight is just the Professional Development Day. Tomorrow, we have a full Professional Development Day, and we're really excited about that. We are going to kick off the day tomorrow with a keynote speaker, Billy Donigan. And she is going to be coming and talking to our staff about skills-based teaching and learning. And as a result of her presentation, we've been, we've sent some information out about our keynote and the work that she specializes in. And we've been asking for teachers who might be interesting, interested in being a part of our first cohort that really works on taking a unit from beginning to end and working with Billy to build a solid skills-based unit of study. And we've had a lot of teachers come forward, so we may have more than we can handle for our first cohort, but we'll see tomorrow. So that's, that's very exciting. And then after, after we have the presentation with Billy, all of our schools are going back and doing a school-based professional development for the rest of the day. And there's a variety of things happening, and it's different in each of the schools. So the Brezner Hand School, we've got a focus on foundational reading skills as well as writing in science for grades three through five. So our teachers from the Brezner Hand and the Mullen will be working on that collaboratively. We have a lot of subgroups that are working on, you know, we've got kindergarten, we've got some kindergarten, we've got all of our kindergarten teachers, first and second grade teachers, STEM teachers in the afternoon, working on development, developmental relationships with Andy Agmont. And she is now starting to work with the developmental assets at the elementary school. So that fits really nicely into our social-emotional learning that we're doing. We've got IEP, an X2 training with special education and related service providers. Christina Gentili will be doing communications workshop with instructional assistants tomorrow. Our nurses are working together, our psychologists are working together. We've got a lot of vertical teams that are working on a variety of things. I told you about the Mullen, they'll be working with our third grade teachers at the Brezner Hand. The middle school is continuing their work on building collaborative cultures in a standards-based system. And they're working with a consultant, Kevin Hutchinson. He's been, he's been working with them since the beginning of the year. And they're continuing their work with that, and they're very excited about having a full day to do that. And the high school is, has started their work on working to develop strong assessment systems. And they are working in professional learning communities by content area and doing that work tomorrow. So we look forward to a great day.
Is that Kevin Hutchinson, the former North End Over Superintendent?
It is, yes it is.
That's cool.
Yeah.
He's a good guy.
Yes. Any questions?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Superintendent Gallagher's report.
All right. I think for the most part, just really gonna touch base on the, my entry plan, the process that I'm in right now. All right. And we are excited to have Miss Donigan coming in. She flew in, flying in tonight from Colorado. I did a lot of work with her in the past, and I think our staff's gonna be really excited for tomorrow. I'm excited for tomorrow. So I wanted to touch base on the entry plan and kind of put the information I sent you earlier to a call point, and we'll kind of go through this quickly. And I'll touch base at the end, if you have any questions. This is kind of what I've always believed in, good is the enemy of great. And settling for good for a lot, for a lot of systems, a lot of businesses, a lot of people never become great because we're content with good. And we've been really working with this throughout, you know, throughout the year. And even when things are going well, we can always get better. And that's the excitement about education. Everything's always changing in our field. And this was the video that I'd like to, hopefully this works, if it doesn't, we'll go to the next slide. But this is a short video, and it's Did You Know videos. And Scott McLeod is the one that generated this. And he has a nice new book of Different Schools for a Different World. And this is what we're reading as a leadership team. And him and I, he's willing to, as we start moving our journey as a district moving forward in the future, he'd be willing to work with us later on to both the changes that's facing all of us in education. If we go back to that. Let's see. This was the video that we opened up with this year. And so when we look at 2028, that is the present first and second graders right now. So by the time they graduate, the world's gonna look a lot different to them and to us. So that's why, at this time, you know, for in education, this is a kind of a very challenging time, but also a very exciting time. So when we look at the changes that we're facing, so this, this is kind of, as we start to develop a path and a vision utilizing the strategic plan, there's certain elements down the, down the road that we're going to be working with. And some of the things that we already have in place and work with our faculty to make sure that they have the tools in the classroom, you know, to really start engaging in 21st century learning curriculum. So with that being said, as we're looking at the entry plan or my entry plan, it's really broken up into a few different items. It's a lot of listening, learning, observing, understanding the Newburyport community, public schools. And really, it's that relationship development that we've been, that I've been doing for the past three months, but will continue for over a ten year period. A lot of one-on-one conversations, talking to a lot of people throughout the community, a lot of the different stakeholders, visiting classrooms, a lot of the things that I've already been doing the last three months. And then I'll, at the end of the entry plan, once I gather a lot of these informations, it will give us goals to really focus on as we enhance and continue to work with our strategic plan. General questions that I've been asking with a lot of the different people that I've met with are right here. Really been focusing the last four questions on, you know, what are our strengths in your opinion? And this is all various stakeholders. And kind of, you know, what are the goals or what are your hopes for the district? What do you see as our opportunities? And then the last piece, we were asking like goal development, but we really shifted that last question to really tie into that graduation. For a public school graduate, what are the skills, knowledge, and dispositions? Do they need to be successful in work, communities, and the larger world? That essential question starts to get us to focus of what are the skill sets that we believe our graduates are going to need to have to be successful in college, or in work, or within the larger community? And for us to start to define that skill, it's almost like a backwards design. If this is what we want our graduates to be, then you backwards design that from pre-K all the way to grade 12. You know, and it all ties together. When we did our, just a quick example, we did our learning walks when we were at preschool, and they had snack time. Snack time was a very organized, structured setting. All the students were at a table, they were all sharing, being polite, working, how to collaborate and share with one another. And when you're looking at the preschool, kindergarten, and the elementary, they use every social interaction as a learning opportunity. So it really ties to the real world when we start looking at the skills necessary for our graduates to be successful. So it all really ties in together. Here are the scheduled conversations. Been doing a lot of individual conversations with a lot of different people. Been visiting, as I said, a lot of schools, obviously the mayor and union leadership. A lot of this is also ongoing. So I met with a lot of people in August and September, and now we're kind of circling back in with follow-up questions and information, which is really, really important. As we move forward, this is kind of general timelines, a lot of the work superintendent visits school, sites, visible conversations with faculty and support staff. That's been ongoing for me. That's important to me throughout the course. I don't ever believe in, with my leadership, that we'll ever lose focus of teaching and learning. There's obviously the operations and the management of the school system, but teaching and learning has to be the focus point for all of us. And the only way you understand that, the only way you keep that in the forefront, if you're in the schools, you're visiting with principals, you're visiting with teachers, talking to students and families. Very, very important to keep your, I think, a pulse on the school system. And then those are a lot of the different people that I've already met with, that I plan on meeting with. And as you know, with the beginning of this, you know, I had a little setback with the loss of my father, so I'm kind of jumping back in, in October and November with some more other people that we're visiting. So really, really important. You know, there's, and we'll get to some of the short-term accomplishments that we already had and some of the long-term planning goals. But this is kind of the breakdown for the fall, the, this part of my entry plan. I'm not gonna read every bullet point, but you can kind of see the gist of how we're incorporating all the stakeholders within the community. So here are the documents, and this is, down the bottom, if you see the district review process, although it's very cumbersome and Assistant Superintendent Vick is, you know, losing sleep trying to gather all the information. But it's information where we're gathering and we can see where our strengths are and then what areas, you know, especially with curriculum structure and assessment, what areas that we can make some improvements. But here are the different documents on the academics that we're looking at, or that I'm looking at now. And this is ongoing, so this isn't, you know, let me just take a look at this and then, you know, and move on. So there are parts of these different programs and initiatives and documentation that, you know, we can tweak as we, as I gather some more information. The other aspect is operation and financial, the finances, the different programs that we're looking at, the capital plans, school improvement plans. As Brett Chairman was saying, a part of the school improvement plans and school insight council is budget and making sure that is talked about at the school level with the different stakeholders, parents, and students. Curriculum scope and sequence, and then school safety plans and protocols. So that's the other documents that we're taking a look at, that I'm looking at. To kind of get the background on Newburyport public schools and then to see areas that are working and then maybe some other areas, you know, that we can tweak. And then really developing the primary goals. So this, this entry plan, as you have the 100 days outlined, is really about for me to gain insight, to understand the process, to work with all the stakeholders inside and outside the school, do a lot of listening, observing, analyzing, sharing the feedback, and then develop probably 100 goals for the strategic plan. As you know, we're very proud of the strategic plan. From talking to a lot of the stakeholders and inside and outside our school community, the strategic plan is a great, is a great, I think, vision for us to continue to follow. But really to prioritize within the strategic plan, you know, one-year, two-year, three-year goals of accomplishment. And that's, I'm excited about that. So all of this information, I will then collect it all as it's ongoing. And then in early, late winter, early spring, or whenever it is, we'll do a full presentation of my findings and kind of where we're gonna really start to focus. So as I was going through everything, so I'm, I'm not just going on listening tours. We actually have changed some things right away from listening to feedback from a lot of people. I think one of the number one, some of the things that we've developed, I really believe is relationship building. Building with the leadership team and district goal development. At our next school committee, we'll be presenting the district goals, and you'll see they're very consistent among all building leaders and the extended leadership team. So we're moving the whole district together. We're all focusing on the same goals. From the administration to the extended leadership team members, to teachers. I think we've done a nice job working with everybody with, with the focus. We've developed a evaluation process to be more user-friendly for educators and evaluators. And that's from talking to the union, getting their feedback on conversations from them, on how we can make that process more user-friendly. So the faculty's actually getting specific feedback and make that baseline forms and some of those processes a little bit easier for everybody. We developed the learning walks procedures, and that's going on throughout the district. Where the extended leadership team is gonna be in the classrooms twice a month. We're focused on teaching and learning. This is from the CSSR setup of a secondary school redesign and some of the leadership that I've shared with the school committee, opportunities, and then also bringing in Billy Donigan to really work with teachers, doing, enhancing the great things already doing. Dual enrollment conversations already, you know, spoke with Endicott College and President John Keenan, Salem University, to bring a dual enrollment program pilot to Newburyport. And that's possible happening next spring, or this, this spring coming up, and what's that gonna look like? Budget process and warrant revisions through the school committee feedback. You know, we're in the process of making things more transparent and more understandable. And that's something that will continue. School community communications is, I threw in the Friday memo that I think has been helpful, but really trying to update and communicate with our school committee. As part of our extended leadership team when we, when we met in the summertime, and that was one, you know, for us to work as a team and to be on the same page. And I think we've done a great job with that, and that will be ongoing. Building relationships with the Newburyport families, developing community partnerships was also, you know, bringing the businesses back. So obviously, the NEF is a big aspect of that. But a rotarian, I'm a rotarian now, which I don't know what that includes, but I think I'm in meetings. I think I've been doing a lot of volunteering and
Santa parade.
There you go, the Santa parade. But no, that's been, that group has been awesome. And their commitment to the school system and wanting to do better for kids. The CPAC members, I went to that first meeting with CPAC. And we have, you know, Christina and Chutilly, but also the parents. We have two co-chairs, and then the visioning with that organization and really looking at CPAC to be a resource for all families and not just families with students with disabilities. So, and that's exciting. And we shared some of the middle sex partnership for youth, some of those workshops with CPAC. So they can start to formulate informational sessions for families. Families, you know, with children like we're all dealing with, you know, potential students with depression, anxiety, substance issues, all of those things that impact our youth, having all the families be part of that. And that's been a great group with some great vision on really how to help out. The union president's really building, you know, partnerships and relationship building with all the unions as we're gonna be negotiating free contracts. So these are some of the short-term accomplishments that we've had already changing within a three-month period, which is very short time. It seems like I've been here forever. I love it. So as we move forward and we look at long-term goals, from talking to a lot of our people. So as you know, the union contracts, we need to negotiate this by the end of this school year. So we have three contracts out there. I think the budget development in really maximizing our resources. From school committee, talking to the principals, and teachers, can we do things a little bit different? And can we maximize our resources to help all of our students meet their social and academic potential? Development of those 21st century classrooms, some of those aspects to give our teachers tools to help them as this world is ever-changing. And then looking at a technology plan with a major focus on sustainability. And what's that gonna look like? A technology plan for the district is a big part of one of my goals. So it becomes affordable for everybody. And then what's that gonna look like down the road? I think flexible scheduling from talking to, you know, some stakeholders out there, from talking to the late start times people. That's another review, looking at that once again and developing a plan for that. And as we know, the Middle Sex League has adopted a late start and flexible scheduling. Comprehensive dual enrollment program where our students, you know, one of the ultimate goals is having our students have a real-world work experience and internship, and then the dual enrollment program. And as we know, a student that can complete a college-level course by the time they graduate high school is more apt to finish college in a four-year period than students who haven't had exposure to college. And that is a big, a big piece in the dual enrollment program. Enhancing our college and career readiness programs that we already have in place. And then broaden our community engagement opportunities, giving a lot more people access to the school system and really for us to extend our arms and bring them onboard. And then really capital planning for the district, future capital plan. So these are some of the, the areas of long-term planning, and I'm still gathering information that will address, I think, in, at the end of my entry plan, my entry plan and findings. I'm really excited because when you're looking at a lot of the big picture items, we already have the grassroots going on. So our teachers are doing a lot of these things already on a daily basis. Our goal, or my goal, is to get us all to focus, to bring all of these great pockets of greatness, bring them together so all of us are working together, moving in the same direction, and helping create a vision through our current strategic plan in the future. So I'm really excited about that. And then last but not least, this is, this is a, T-shirts that we're giving out to the teachers tomorrow. So I'm sure they're all watching the school committee tonight, so I'm not ruining their surprise. This is what I'm all about, you know? Today's day and age, we're in this together, you know, from administration to teachers, to parents, to families, to community members, school committee. I really believe with all the challenges that we're all facing in raising this generation, we all have to be in it together. And that's what I truly believe, you know, team, together everyone achieves more. And that's my overview of the, my entry plan, kind of where I'm at. And as we move forward, I plan on a full report to the school committee, community at large. You know, wintertime or early spring when we're ready to go. So there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Sean?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I think you're touching on all areas that are essential for developing a comprehensive plan. I think the one thing that is not there, which I'm getting a little anxious about, is the number of retirees coming and redesigning the organization of central office as well as, so personnel succession planning, that I think should be
Like staffing patterns. I kind of had that in as part of our budget process.
I'm sure you do.
Yes, when we, when I do my final report, I'll talk about that. Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Terrific, Josh. Looking forward to your report. I've heard, you know, lots of people have come up to me in the community and say, oh gee, I talked to the new superintendent. He asked really good questions. So a lot of people are telling me that you're out and about, which is great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm really enjoying the transition. It was exactly, this community was exactly what I pictured it to be. And I just think it's just getting everyone onboard and working together, so I'm really excited.
Yeah, thank you. All right, good job.
The next item on the agenda, the last item, is, do we have subcommittee reports?
Sure. The policy subcommittee met Saturdays ago. The good news is we don't have anything major coming down track with policy. We do have some that are coming back to you. One that actually went through a first reading and we discovered no, made it to second reading, which is just as well because we found a tweak that we needed to do that. And that's a policy on charging for meals when a student's account goes beyond a reasonable size. The second thing that we will be getting back to you is also a revision on our policy on student activity monies, especially what happens when either an activity ceases or when a graduating class graduates. Where does that money go to? And so we're working with, well, Steve had some comments that related to history, and we're working to get Mr. Wolfson put into it, just so we can make sure that whatever we have in our policy is consistent, consistent with the practice. The practice seems to have been working well, but we just need to make sure that they reflect and show. And finally, the other thing that we had was, which we had to move. Oh, we had a good initial discussion and we're working on trying to figure out how to best address this in terms of animals, i.e. dogs, on school campuses. We have had reports and comments from administrators that they didn't believe that breaking up dog fights was one of the things that they should be doing or could be doing. We have also had comments from administrators that they're, that some dog owners are not being enough after themselves appropriately. So we're sort of taking a whole look at that and seeing what it is as a school we need to do to be more proactive.
We're not talking about dogs that are enrolled in, in any of these schools, right? I mean, they're not wandering the halls, we're talking about
Yeah, out on the Right now, we have very specific, we have very specific policy in place for animals within the school building.
Right, service dogs.
Service dogs or, you know, reading to Rover type program and stuff like that. We have those in, in place, but they do not cover the whole school campus. And so when you get out to the athletic fields, when you get out to some of the other places people are likely to bring their dogs, like pickup time, it tends to be, it tends to be a bit of a challenge at times.
Or, or games. People often bring dogs to games.
Yeah, no, it's games, it's pickup time, are the, are the two times. And then coming in on Monday mornings, there is a long time that the facilities are not as clean as they would like to be.
I would recommend you use the same policies that we have adopted from the city council in terms of the board instances. They're there. There's laws that would apply to, because these are city buildings too, the campuses around. And if you need bags, we could also work with the Parks Commission and get, you know, because we have the, the bags with the dispensers, so we encourage people to pick up more. And if we need to put some in each of the school, you know, playgrounds or the other fields, then it's worth doing. And it just means that we have to figure out who picks up what it's called.
Okay. We're looking, we're looking, it's very initial time, we basically just had that as a discussion item because it was recorded.
I just, just for clarity, especially, I think it's for dismissal and pickup, I mean, and drop off. So when the students are coming out and you have a lot of, you know, students and there are dogs there, you know, I would, I think especially that I mentioned, will kids go pat a dog or just think, you know, danger.
Well, I think they're, they've already been banned from the resident for, this is the second year that they haven't allowed dogs. The dog officer's there every morning, like no, you, I mean, it's been two years now that you could not bring a dog for pickup or drop off.
As far as this walkway here.
Yeah. If I come with my dog, I have to wait on the street until my kids come home.
All right.
So that's, I don't think the resident's the problem, but, because you don't, you don't see dogs there, but it's probably other schools maybe.
Yeah.
I think part of that problem was because we had people who were just
Right, right after that.
It's brand-new playgrounds where our kids are just not keeping up with their dogs. So I think you, you know, you had to become a, you know, a total man. Unfortunately, but, you know.
So that's policy for you.
Yeah, okay.
Join Ed met, before this meeting, we had a kind of a good, wide-ranging conversation about both the, the budget process and some ideas that we have in the budget process, some of the history of the budget process, as well as sort of preparing for the meeting. We'll have a joint meeting on the 27th. meeting, we will have joint meeting on the 27th.
Finance Subcommittee, yes, we met on October 16th and I'll just work backwards on the agenda a little bit. Uh, Superintendent Gallagher went over his proposed FY20 budget process. Uh, we also reviewed, uh, the, uh, fir- the first quarter expense report for this fiscal year. Uh, current spending is at 69.4%, including encumbrances for operations, plant, sped, tuition, transportation, legal and lease, licensing agreements. This is a higher percentage than we usually allow, but it's due to limited expense spending over the past few years, so it is in control. Uh, Mullen School is under the average, however, teachers will be processing their second purchasing request at the end of January. Uh, system-wide, our technology is showing approximately a $38,000 shortfall, uh, due to an equipment purchase, uh, due to a sixth grant involving a Chromebook and cart purchase for the one-to-one program. However, this will be offset by approximately a $34,000 remaining in the FY18 budget, which is carried over for FY19 use. The finance subcommittee did review, uh, a proposed transfer, uh, which involves expense to expense, uh, transfers from, uh, athletic transportation to athletic meets and fees, uh, $1,211. This involves extra buses for cross-country, which is a very, uh, highly participated sport this fall at NHS. Uh, we also looked at a transfer of $294.70 from equipment maintenance to equipment purchase to get a new snow blower and a amount of $500 from library supplies to software regarding the online subscription. So the finance subcommittee, uh, recommended this transfer be approved for $2,005.70 and I will, uh, move that the school committee approve that transfer tonight, uh, at this time.
Give us a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No unanimously passes.
And that concludes what we covered at finance subcommittee.
Terrific. I think that, I think that covers it. Um, I would like a motion to hold an executive session as provided under chapter 30A, section 21A2 of general laws to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations, collective bargaining and/or potential litigation. So we will not be returning.
Moved.
Second.
Can you roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Riden?
Yes.
And Mr. Toll?